We've been to the discussion among the board members about the process that we use for reviewing the budget. So we decided to have this work session not to talk about the budget line items. But I distributed them to you ahead of time so that you'd have an opportunity, if you chose, to kind of get a sense of what it is we're going to be looking at in the coming weeks before we have the discussion about how we want to proceed with looking at it. In the past, I mean, there are 100 different ways that people will come up with to do municipal budgets. And at times in the past, I'm informed that the board was painstaking about their review of the city budget line item by line item, department by department. And when I came here, the board at the time expressed a desire to get away from that. And then to have the city administrator work with department heads to come up with a budget proposal, I didn't have to do it this time, but in the past, you know, they, some department heads could kind of use the budget as their wish list. You know, I'd like to have this piece of equipment, and I know we can't afford it, but I'm going to put it in there anyway. And my job was to make sure that you didn't get presented with a budget that had a lot of things like that in it. This budget does not. The other approach is, or thought is, that if we just look at the budget, like what it was last year and what it is this year, and compare numbers to numbers, we really aren't talking about this board's priorities, we're just building on the past priorities. And so I heard some expression, desire, idea, expressed about, let's talk about priorities, let's at least review what we're doing and see if that's the way we want to continue to go. Those are the kinds of conversations that this work session is designed to address. The, I will tell you however, there's, we don't have any fat, because we don't, we don't have enough money to budget fat. And so any decision about changing priorities means you're going to do more of something in one area and less of something in another area, unless you want to spend down your reserves. And I've expressed to you that the credit markets get reports of our budget every year, and in the past, they have expressed a concern about the level of our reserve account. In fairness, I don't think they're looking at the whole thing, I look, I think they're only looking at the general fund. There are other reserves they don't necessarily pick up, but regardless, I don't think spending down your reserve is a wise thing to do, either for that reason, or for the reason that you don't have your emergency funds, except if something goes wrong, where are you going to get the money to fix it? And, you know, major calamity, like a bridge washes out. And so, the amount of money that's available in the budget, that's what you might call discretionary, is relatively minor, unless you want to just stop doing something. And then take the money that we were using to do it and do something else. I caution you, and I do this every year, and I'm going to do it again this year, to avoid the tendency to look at last year's budget, and what was spent or wasn't spent out of that budget, and make adjustments going into the new year based on that. And the reason for that is, that number one, I think our department heads do uniformly a good job of monitoring their budget, and trying to spend less than was budgeted. And in most cases, we do. But to then punish them for doing that creates a bad environment for next year's budget. Because next year, they're going to think, oh my gosh, I have to spend what was budgeted, or I'll never see that money again. So, you know, I've seen that happen, and I've talked to a few people in local government recently about that, and they said, absolutely, that's what's happened, that's what happens. So I trust the department heads that we have, I know you do, I think they're good stewards of the money that we give them, and they're responsible in their spending. I don't think anybody's making bad investment decisions, they usually come to me, and if I thought it was bad, I would say no. You know, we buy a few things we haven't had before, but the things that we buy are usually designed to reduce man-hours and improve efficiency. And so I fault them for that, and once again, we shouldn't punish them for their frugality by cutting a budget because they didn't spend it last year. That said, how do you want to proceed with this? I mean, if there is a desire to do something different from what we've done for the last six years, what is it different that you'd like to do?
I'd like to comment too. I got that MML magazine, and I put in your, there was a very good article in that magazine right up front, it's called Conflict Management for Local Officials. Have you all had time to review that? Have you looked at it in your packet? And if you didn't, that's okay, but as you, I want you, when you're thinking about this, and what this group does and determines what to do in the future for this city, I think you really need to look at, look at some of these topics, especially on the, there's about 12 bullet points that are very, very good for leadership. And I think you have to, we have to, I'm not saying, but in the, how it was in the past, but I know as we go forward, you know, we're starting to look, I see, I can see in this city, in the short time I've been here recently, and now, is, there's some progress, there's some things that are, that are out there, that are out in front of us, maybe two, three years, Martin and I were talking about, you, we're talking about this National Park, you know, everything I hear Tim Good talks about is six to 12 months, you know, and everything I hear from them, what that means for the city, it's going to be more tax dollars coming in, people coming in, spending more money. You've got a water park within a year that's going to be boom, that's going to be out there, it's going to bring more people into the community, those people are going to spend money, they're going to, and then we also have this learning center, and I don't know when it's coming online, but that, there's another one that's going to, that's going to add revenue to the city, and it's going to, this is going to get better, I think we're going to have more money to do more things, but it's, it could be three to, three years out. And, and I just think, keep that in mind as we, as we look at this, because what we don't want to do is do something and have, and go backwards. You know, our, this group decides to do something that goes backwards. And I know everybody on the front end of this, hey, we have a problem with our police officers, and we have to raise, we have to raise their pay. That's, that's real, I understand that. But what I don't want to do is, is try to take this budget and do that, because we're going to go backwards. Because we've got to be very mindful that we have a lot of valuable, our valuables, our assets are our customers, which is our, the people that we serve, and our employees. We've got to take care of them. If that balance beam is not level, you're going to have problems. And we provide good service to our customers with our employees. And I go with that, what I've seen in the last year or so that I've been mayor, is we have some very, very good employees, all the way around, from policemen, to city workers, to office people, to, I mean, we've got some great employees. And we also have some wonderful volunteers that, that work in this community that we are, should be very thankful for, that don't get very much recognition, but they do a lot of hard work in this community to make this city look like it is. And I spent a lot of time in this city, talking to people that come into this city, I'm pretty proud of this city, and a lot of good feedback. I get a lot of good feedback from customer relationships that come into this city hall, that people are, feel that they're treated well. You know, and you're always going to have that one or two that you're not going to ever please, and some people you just can't do, but keep that in mind as we go forward, and that's what I want to do, because there was so much, what I seen last year was there's so many questions, and we're kind of rushing through it, and let's take time to talk about it. If there's places where we need, and you think that we don't need that anymore, let's talk about it. That's, and that's what I have to say. Is anybody else anything to offer?
Paul, with this National Parks thing, I mean, do we have any idea what they're going to expect of the city, and what might cost us money with them? You know, I know they're looking for a place, pretty adamant, or the previous, I guess the current director now, soon to be the ex-director, was very adamant about the fact that it needed to be on the square, and 3,000 square feet, which we have no idea why that's. But I mean, is there any expenditures that we're, should we look at that?
As far as that goes...
Because he was pretty adamant, the fact that this thing fails, it's on us.
Well, no, it's, it's not on, it's, they're adamant, it's on them. It's, it's very much on them, that's what they don't...
They're pumping how many million in?
Well, sure, they're pumping...
Yeah, they're, they're going to be putting money in, but the base budget has been set, but the meetings that I've, and Martin has attended to, is it's what they expect and where they're going. And there's, there's a lot of questions.
I think we're going to be asked at some point in the near future to sign a memorandum of understanding, which will be the city's commitment to the National Park Service as to what it is we're going to do to support the National Park Service. Now preliminary conversations with them, it has nothing to do with spending money. I mean, they're not going to obligate us to street improvements or anything. But they want to make sure that we continue to do what we have done that got the National Park Service here in the first place. They want a continued commitment to preserving our archaeological and architectural heritage, is an example. They would hate to move here and have us disband the Heritage Commission and stop enforcing things. You know, they want us to continue to implement our zoning ordinances. So those are the kinds of commitments they're going to be looking for, because it's been the commitment of the city in those areas that has captured the imagination of the National Park Service. And I think we're, you know, we're inclined to do those kinds of things, I don't think we plan to change any of that.
And I think one thing we're going to, we're going to have to do is, is as we go forward here, is more recreation for people. A family comes into this city, you know, and simple, what I'm talking about is biking, hiking, trails, stuff like that.
But that was my next part of the, of the thing and stuff, with us, you know, not really looking seriously at these Corps of Engineer projects, future ones and stuff, are they expecting those?
They're not.
I haven't heard any discussion.
They're not, no. And when I, and with the levy board, and there's been a lot of talk, and it was in the, in the meeting, talking about that levy, they're, they're talking right now about, and the levy board's talking about spending some money, they, first of all, they want to find out where that line is, and where that levy needs to be, level it, and they've already done some leveling work on that levy, they've been doing some grading, and then taking that levy and putting some crushed rock on it, and sort of getting that levy to top of that levy like it's the Katy Trail. They're, they're talking about putting work and doing work to Division Street, all the way from fixing that road all the way out there to the levy. They're, they've got some funds to do that, to improve that roadway, and there's, hopefully put a parking lot out there, because the future plan is to, is to get people on top of that levy. And that's something for the future, is, is we need to reconnect this city back to that river. People, that's one thing I hear, is people, well, how can, where do I see the river? Where can I see the river? Well, they end up out there at the marina most times, at least now the ice war's gone, or up at the landing, up there, up at the ferry landing, up there to see the river, but there is some possibilities to, so I can see we might spend some money doing that. But that'd be something we need to do anyway, you know, because if you, Martin and I talked about, if people come in to see the older buildings, and, well, there's got to be something else, well, what else? Why would they want to come back?
That money's already allocated out of the capital improvement fund, not the budget.
Right, right. Did you have more?
Well, I, you know, I guess some stuff, so any core projects, we basically said, no.
No. The Corps has, and I think I emailed you, the last, forwarded to you the last email I got from the Corps of Engineers, they've turned their final report into Washington, and I don't know how long it takes to turn that around. But when we finally get that, it will identify the work that, should they ever be funded, they will do. And our plan was to decide among those things that, that they might, might do, what is it we'd like to see done now, rather than waiting for them to get funded? With the knowledge that, should they ever get funded, then what it, what we spend goes against our, our match. So we know the trail, or some iteration of the trail, is in that report, and if we wanted to go ahead and do that, then we could. And the cost of doing it would be counted against their future funding. And that's the decision we'll have to make. But that money, as Joe points out, is going to come out of the, what's called the Federal Levy Fund, you know, the Capital Improvement Fund. We will calculate based on their estimates what the total expenditure would be, and either, it's either 25 percent share or 50 percent share of the work, and we'll decide what amount of money we want to reserve to match, to satisfy our obligation to match that work. And then whatever's left, we could spend for other projects. But if we spend it for trail, that's not another project, that's one of the elements that they will be calling out in their report.
Yes.
Okay. I would like to pose a question, and I'd like to hear what the rest, how the rest of the board feels. When it comes to the subject of tourism, or the welcome center, that is, you know, a pretty good, pretty good chunk of money there. And I struggle with it because I, and I don't want it to sound like I don't value tourism, because I do, we need it. But I struggle with perhaps the amount of money that's spent on it, and I would be curious to hear how the rest of the board feels. Could we, should we, maybe think about redistributing some funds from that to maybe help, because I mean, we've got a lot of serious issues that need to be taken care of, that's no secret. Streets need work, police department needs more money, there's a lot of other things. So, I, I kind of, I kind of struggle with some of it, and I'd just like to hear some thoughts from some other people, how do, how do the other board members feel about it?
I've asked before, and I don't know if I ever got an answer, because I don't think we have, I don't think anybody knows the answer yet, but, you know, a quarter of a million dollars is a lot of money to spend on one item like that. And I understand that we, we see some benefit of that. However, I'd kind of like to know a little bit more about what the National Park is bringing to the table, and how much of the work that they're going to be doing is going to be redundant to what we're paying to have done for the city. So, I'd like to see some sort of numbers to see if we can work, like you were saying, work together with the National Park Service, and maybe work together with them and not only reduce our costs overall, but, you know, by us funding some of it.
Maybe consolidate some services.
Right, because I have a hard time believing that there isn't going to be a ton of redundancy there, with what they're doing to promote their National Park, which promotes our whole town, not just the National Park properties, and what our Tourism Commission, Tax Commission, all that, what they do to, I'd like to see something studied on the effect of all of them being combined and working together, rather than having two, well, at least two separate entities, the Park Service versus the Tourism Commission, our Tourism Board or Department. Like I said, a quarter of a million's a lot of money for us to spend on something that we're not really required to have. A lot of cities that have tourist stuff there aren't, don't do, fund their departments like that. You know, we are required to have a fire department, we are required to have a police department, we are required to have safe streets and sidewalks. So, I mean, I mean...
Well, I don't want to change the conversation, but... I know that the National Park Service is not going to operate our visitor center. And the majority of that $250,000 is not spent on marketing, it's spent on staffing and maintaining the Welcome Center. The marketing comes out, you know, in the $50,000 range. So, if you are talking about, if you want to save $250,000, you have to talk about shutting down the Welcome Center.
Well, when I go back and look at previous years, you go back eight years, and every single line item of that department has more than doubled in just eight years. And no other department has had that kind of increase. And I'm just wondering if the spending is worth the reward, when we don't have near the increases anywhere else.
And at one time, wasn't it predominantly volunteers, or were some? You're nodding, yes, was that, I was under that impression, but I don't know that, was it?
It was volunteers, and then the Jerde Fett Committee, like, gave the city $24,000 a year that paid for the lady that ran it at the time.
Right, right, right.
And then the rest were volunteers.
Right.
I don't understand your comment, Joe.
Yeah, the increase?
Yeah.
Where's that at?
Let me see if I can find it here. Which maybe this is the topic for discussion when we go through the actual budgets, but...
Yeah, we almost have to have department heads in order to get...
No, that's why we weren't going to discuss kind of the...
Right, but this is just sort of a general feeling, and how do you guys feel about it? It's something that I've looked at for a long time, and this being my third year here, I kind of wanted to settle in and just see what's going on, and I, I kind of struggle with some of it. So, you know, I don't think I'm alone in that, I want to hear other people's thoughts too.
I feel like as, as a person elected to the board, it's our job to look at it closely.
Exactly, that's what we're here for.
And if we're not looking at it as closely as we can, I mean, we're stewards of a big chunk of money that needs to be used to run the city in various ways, and if we're not looking at it closely, then I feel like we're not doing our jobs.
But you're talking about in general, not just this one particular...
In general.
In general, yeah.
I'm not targeting any, any particular...
No, and I don't, I don't want it to be construed that I am. I just look at, and I agree with something that Martin said earlier, in that I don't really feel there is any fat. I mean, our, our department heads, I have confidence in them, and I don't, I don't feel the need to go over every line item of every department, but I feel like on a general level, just looking at the pie, and how the pie is distributed, the percentages, what we have to work with, I feel like this needs looking at. Maybe I'm wrong, I just, but I want other people to, you know, I want to talk through it, I want to hear, you know? Maybe I can be convinced otherwise. But, and what the exact answer is, I don't know either, I want to hear what people have to say.
I don't think, I don't think the National Park Service is coming in here to sell St. Genevieve. That's not their, their job there. The National Park is coming in to establish some properties and showcase them, is what, and now, well, that, that will bring people to town. But people are going to come to town, because you're, you're still going to have several properties that are not owned by the National Parks.
Right.
There's other things in this community to do that have to be sold, and have to be worked out, so...
Well, this bears a question, Mayor. Do they need to be sold?
Well, that's a, that's a smoking gun, is what that is. That's, that's, the only way you're going to find that out, Randy?
I know.
Is to make a decision and say, we're not going to do it, and let's see what happens. And if it's, if it, and if it works, whoo, man, don't we look good? But if it don't, then everybody here will have to answer to that. I'm not willing, I'm not willing to take the chance, I'll be honest with you. What I've seen is, there's, there's a lot of moving parts when you talk to tourism, and you're looking at the budget, but I encourage you, spend some time with some people that are working in that, and, and make sure you're, we're doing the right thing. I am absolutely, I'm against it. I'm, I'm sorry, it's very important, and the reason I'm against it is because that is one of the departments, every one of our, our police department, they don't bring money into the city, they cost us money. Our streets and roads, they cost us money. All right, our employees, they're, it's, they're not, this is something that's generating revenue, you know, so, how much, I don't know, is it offset it? I don't know, but...
But, but see, and I'm glad you brought that up, because, okay, they're generating revenue for private entities, shops, stores, and I want those people to succeed.
That's what generates...
But generally speaking, in the free enterprise system, if you have a business, you're responsible for promoting yourself. It's, it's, I struggle with the idea of tax dollars going to, to promote private businesses.
Well, but the private businesses sell things that generate the tax dollars that we operate off of.
Yeah, I know, I know.
That's it.
I, I...
It's tough, it's, it's very tough, it's very difficult.
It's a tough one, it is, it is.
How do we know if this is working, tax dollar wise?
Well, you'll never know. But what I do know is, we monitor the, what we consider to be the tourism sensitive businesses, and we compare the movement of our tax dollars on the tourism sensi, sensitive businesses to the movement of the general tax dollars. Because if you're spending $50,000 a year on marketing, and you're trying to figure out how it works, you need to do that. So, if we get a 3% increase in sales tax, and the tourism sensitive businesses only increase about 3%, they haven't done any more than the general economy would have generated.
Right.
And, and since, since we have been doing it, there've been a couple of years where it was insignificant, but in the last several years, if we get a 3% general tax increase, we see 5, 6% in the tourism sensitive businesses. So, our tax increases are higher in those areas, and lower on the downside, you know? So, is that a direct result of this money being spent? I don't know. How much is it?
That's why I struggle with it.
And be mindful, more people coming into town, more people that have to be, that are going to have questions, direction, and there's a hole, there's a lot goes into that. And unless you spend some time down there on a Friday night...
Years ago, we struggled with that very issue.
Yeah.
And there's a, something called a conversion study that can be done, but it's very expensive. And it puts, these companies that do that put people here, and they stay here, and they interview people, and they spend a long time to come to a conclusion as to how the tax, the marketing dollars are converting to sales. But we didn't have the $50,000 to pay for it, so we...
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't think that would be money well spent, really.
You know, I guess one question, you know, I have itself, looking at the 10-month actual and stuff, you know, out of the total that they've spent so far, $205,000, $100,000 of that is basically as wages and benefits. How many people do we have works there, and what is our staff, and...
I don't know, but Sanders is only full-time employee, these are the part-time people that work, to fill the hours, that, we don't have, are the interns working full-time?
They almost have to be, we're spending $17,000 on insurance for somebody.
We only have one full-time employee, it's Sanders.
But to answer your question, I was going from 2009. I was basing my numbers off 2009 versus 2017. Salaries in '09 were $40,000, 2017 adopted budget was 81. Total expenditures for '09 was 102, 2017 was 249, so that's where I...
I was just looking at these four years, and it didn't look like that.
Yeah, I went back to 2009.
I would imagine you've seen increases in almost every department significantly since 2009.
Not, not double.
But a fair amount.
Not, not anywhere close.
What's the city's budget done in the last eight years?
In terms of percentages increase, or...
You know...
It's been pretty, well, it's gone up, and I don't have the exact numbers.
Close, just ballpark.
10% increase?
So this is...
Is that right?
Considerably more.
Well, I remember when I arrived here, a couple of aldermen, proud of the decision they made, to start spending money to support tourism marketing, beyond the money that came from the... beyond the money that came from the lodging tax, because they thought that was, was an investment. And I mean, they were right, but it means that decision was made to do what Joe has did, has talked about. It wasn't just a, kind of a unconscious growth of the budget, it was a decision.
It happened intentionally and purposefully.
And this, this board gets to set their own priorities.
I would invite the Alderman to come to the meeting on the 21st of August at 5:30 to broach this topic directly with the tourism advisor and the board. We have tourism advisory meeting at 5:30 on the 21st and we have tourism commission at 5:45. So I would make note if I were you, on the 21st, perhaps you want to stop in to talk to us about this. I would also suggest or recommend caution in looking at this particular budget item until we have the National Park here for a couple, two, three years. Then we could possibly do a study and make decisions that are data-driven as opposed to kind of just...
Gas, it's gas work.
Off the cuff. We're not going to know what the National Park does until 10 years in. We're not going to know how much of an asset this department is until we have the data that can flesh that out. And I, again, caution you not to gut this department because it may be something that makes us, put this town on the map and help all of us with roads, schools, and everything else.
I agree. I totally agree.
I don't disagree, but, you know, we are faced with some tough decisions and, like I said, streets and sidewalks, we are required to provide. Police protection, fire department protection, we are required to provide.
I absolutely agree with you.
Quarter of a million dollars is a lot of money, you know, and a lot of people, you know, don't feel that their tax money should be spent on supporting private business. And it's not just Randy, it's not just me. A lot of people in this town think that way.
I hear it a lot. And you do represent them.
And your ward, and I appreciate that. And I'm here to say from my ward, there's a heck of a lot of people that are all for this. So this is probably a ward, ward issue. But if you were in ward one or two where it's the historic, most of the historic stuff is there, you're going to have a heck of a time selling this, trying to gut it, I think. You're going to have people coming here in droves, but that's just me. I'm just throwing that out there. And believe you me, I agree with you and I want to go on the record, I completely agree with you about the roads and how important our police and fire are. I think everybody knows that. Either we find other arenas to manipulate the budget, find other revenue streams, or be very, very cautious. That's all I'm saying.
And that's why I posed it as I wanted to hear other people's thoughts, you know? That being said, I, I'm a believer in priorities and I've lived through some tough times myself. When you have tough times, you don't spend money on things that are not absolutely essential.
As a business owner, oftentimes there are things you need to spend money on in the hopes that you'll have return on investment.
Oh, absolutely.
I think this is one of those elements.
And that's your opinion?
And I, and I think that's the opinion of quite a few people and business owners in the committee.
But it also comes down to what we are required to provide and what, you know, they made the decision years ago and that decision at that time was probably the right decision. Was it sustainable? I don't know. We need to look at that. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying gut it. I'm just saying that's one area that I found that we need to look.
I'm not interested in gutting anything.
Because that is a lot of money and that's why I want to look at the National Parks and just, I mean, they say that there's not going to be much, if they can assist us and we can assist them, maybe it'll lower that downside and still get the same job accomplished.
But you're not going to know that.
10 years out.
You're not going to know, at least three years out.
We can at least bring them to the table and see what they're willing to help us with and what we can help them with.
Well, Joe, right now, they're concerned with getting this thing started. And it's six, it's a minimum of six to 12 months. That's what I keep hearing, six to 12 months and to get this going, so... And quite honestly, one of the reasons, important reason that they're even looking at it is because of what's been done with this tourism and all the people involved in everything that they've done to bring this to the table and to get where we're at today. I, I, I just think it's just like you're shooting yourself in the foot. Because, and I understand that there's, it's, roads are important, but in the last two years, we've managed to fix some, some roads. Not all the roads, but our roads, I believe our roads are in a lot better shape and they're going to continue to improve. We've upped it, Gary and them have come up with, with patching that's, that's better. It's a lot better than what it's been. We've got some major arteries that have been repaired and we're going to continue to do that. So, roads, I don't think, people can't say that we're not working on roads. We are. And everybody, in everybody's ward, there's, there's going to be some major road repair. Now, with the police, yeah, there's, there's going to have to be, where are you going to find that money? And that's where it's coming from. And I know it is, and both, we know that is where it's got to come. So, are we going to rob Peter to pay Paul? Is that going to fix it? What are we going to do when, when something else comes up? What are we going to do? We're going to try to cut something else out? I don't know. It's the age-old question. We have these conversations over and over. Well, that's what I said. That's why I say we got to be very mindful, looking two, three, four years out, when none of us may even be here. You know, so we got to be very mindful and smart about that.
Well, I, you know, I'm not interested in gutting anything and stuff. You know, I think it's all of our jobs here and stuff to make sure we're operating at maximum efficiency with minimal, you know, reserves to work with or minimal income to work with and stuff. And as far as looking at each one of these budgets and saying, you know, okay, this $250,000 maybe need to be $240,000, I think that's our job to look at those and make sure that that's, you know, that'll cut it in half or something like that? Absolutely not. But I think we need to make sure every department is operating at maximum efficiency so we can use money for other things that we deem as more important than...
And all we can do is, we can look at the numbers, but we're not actually spending the money and working the budget. That's where we've got to go back to. The people we have in charge, we have to have some trust and some faith in them that they're, they're spending. And where do we cut it? Now, that's, it's a, and I, point well taken, but you still have to have some faith in the people that you employ and that you are.
Yeah, I don't doubt that, but, you know, as for one example, last year, and I don't know why this number sticks out and stuff, our employee health insurance went up 40-plus thousand dollars. How do we keep coming up with those increases if we don't look at every department and say, I know I've had to do that numerous times.
That's never going to end, because that's what insurance does. It goes up.
Yeah, and if we don't look at every one of these departments and say, you know, are we at maximum efficiency? How are we going to keep coming up with those increases? That's a huge chunk of money to come up with every year. And it's like Randy said, it's not going away. It's probably going to be more than that this year.
Well, we got to remember our unique community here for one thing. And the only reason we have that 20-something million dollar levy out here...
$53 million levy.
How many?
53 million.
Oh, I was backwards there. Anyway, you know, that's what, that's why we're here. That's why this community is like it is and we have to take care of that.
I agree.
You know? So, and this is a big part of it. The Welcome Center's a big part of it. You know, the tourism, tourism's a big part of it.
I think we've all heard from people, I know I have, there's a perception from some folks in town that, that this board is concerned with only improving things to improve tourism. I've heard it again and again from people.
I've never heard that at all.
I have absolutely heard it. I've, I've heard it recently in reference to the streets that we've chosen to repair. I was told that, well, Main Street, that's just for the tourists. I disagree with it 110%.
Thank you very much, because Park Street isn't.
And that's, and that's what I've, I've told them. I'm like, oh, Ridgeway, I didn't know that a lot of tourists are hitting up Ridgeway. But that's, that's a perception in town. That's a perception from some people. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that it's an accurate statement, but there are, there are people that think that way.
You know what? I've been in this for 30-some years and it was, it's been like this the whole time, John.
I, and, and, I, I know.
And actually, when I first, when I first ran, I told people, I said, "I don't care about them old houses." You know, and they, they liked to hear that at that time when I got elected. But I changed my mind and I got, I changed my mind in the last, you know...
And Buck, just for the record, how do you feel about those old houses now?
I like them.
Oh, alright.
Tourism to this town is just as important a natural resource as all that lime we're doing now.
Exactly.
It is just as important to this town as that stuff is.
And speaking of that lime, how come we don't revisit the idea of annexing the man? And bring some more money into the city? Let's talk about this. We want more money in this city. They're using our city water. Why don't we just bring that bucket of money right in here? Because they can't pick up blocks and move because their resource is here. Money, money, money.
I'm all ears.
Alright. Then let's have a conversation about bringing revenue in as opposed to gutting our current departments. Then you and I need to go and have ourselves a conversation.
So you know what? They said that, that once the lawyers started in, them were the people that would need the money, of course.
I know.
And it would take years.
Well, it'd take years, but imagine the money. I'm just thinking about, I guess it's just my business mind thinking of revenue stream.
We don't have the money to spend on lawyers.
Would need to be a voluntary annexation.
Well, maybe we should ask them really nicely.
I think it's our job to look closely at the budget every year.
I agree with that.
Agreed. And I think we all do.
I agree with that, John.
The question is, how do you want to approach that this year?
That's good.
I, I would like to, in the past, what we've had, the department heads come in, present their budget to us. We ask them questions, that kind of thing. I think that...
That'd be a good idea.
Yeah, we have to.
Brilliant.
I agree.
I'm all for it.
I think that, you know, I was, I was very new last time we did this and I'm less, a little less new now, but I still feel like I'm pretty new.
I agree.
So, I, I would like to hear what they have to say about what they're requesting and, and, you know, if, if people on this board have tough questions, they want to ask them, then they need to be ready to answer those questions.
Ask them to justify their salaries and expenditures. There you go. And that's a better idea than the 21st, is what I said. That, instead, you're more than welcome. I'd love to have you at the meeting, but that'd be a really good idea, have them come talk to us.
Well, we will. That's what we do.
Yeah.
The question is, at what level of detail do you want to have that discussion?
Line in them, line in them. All the way, they should be able to answer any question that we have.
I mean, anything they have on the news.
The next question is, how many hours do you want to devote to?
Right. Buck?
Whatever it takes.
Oh, my.
One of, one of the popular approaches is called a performance-based budget. And what you do is, you come in with no budget. The city has X number of dollars. And the board, you have to take time off and you have to have you together for, you know, a couple of days, maybe three days. And you just rebuild based on, on the performance goals that you establish for the city. Now, as Joe points out, you can't not have a police department. So, you can't not have a fire department. That, that is a level of time commitment that I think nobody here wants to put, to put in.
Well, I don't think we need to, why do, why do we have to fix something that's not broken? I don't think it's broken. I think it, like John says, it's, we need to look at it, making sure that the money's well spent, but that's like reinventing the wheel. Why do we, why do, I don't want to waste my time doing that. I'm sorry, I just don't want to do that.
Good.
I mean, Martin, you've made a big difference in the time that you've been here. And dealing with you in the last several years that I've been on the board, you're about as frugal as they come when it comes to trying to get money for anything.
Thank you for noticing.
And I have faith that when you sat down to talk to each department to get to this far, that it's not any fluff, but...
Doesn't take, again, that does not take a great deal of effort because they've already thought about it before they get to me.
And the way we've done it in the past is, the major ones, you know, we would have our budget meetings on the off Thursdays that we didn't have these meetings. I think that's what we did.
Yeah, I think so. We did that.
And we'd have three or four of them come in and knock it out in an hour or two and some of them lasted longer than others, some of them didn't. Just to raise any questions we may have to this point. But I don't, I don't want to go back and say, "Why did you spend $10 more on staples this year than you did last year?"
No, I have no desire to do that.
I don't have any need to nitpick any department. I know the majority of them are under budget, you know, for what they requested last year and they do that every year. So, we don't, we're not in that situation where they, you know, with a month to go, they hurry up and spend down that account. I trust the job that Sue's doing, that these numbers are accurate. I trust your diligence in, in talking with the department head. So, I don't feel the need to have a budget committee put together like they used to do. I would like to just do like we've done the past several years and, and, you know, talk to the department head one-on-one.
Well, why don't we set a schedule for that?
Let's do it.
But Martin, I'm not picking on anybody, but for example, the welcomes budget insurance is $20,751. How many police, people are in the police department? Their insurance is only $121,000.
Don't we have the same insurance for all employees?
It's the same insurance, but it's based on if you have full family coverage, if you have, if you're single, if you're married, if you have a family.
See where I'm going?
I know, and you got it. That's, that's a blip on the...
Thought that was a huge amount.
That's what I'm saying.
Every 10,000 helps, right? Every whatever.
Do the part-time employees?
Took a catch.
Well, I mean, this is all stuff, this is all stuff to discuss when we're talking to people.
Right.
But those questions don't have to wait for the department head. I mean, if you've got questions like that, please don't wait for the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Call us.
I think that's a good, that's a good idea. Why is this so much more for the insurance? That'd be a good thing to check into.
But it's, you know, everybody gets the same insurance.
No, mine are just little nuggets I have questions about.
And your cost is a relation, is related to age, sex, number, level of coverage, family, not family.
Oh, my God.
Some opted for extras and they're paying a portion of the premium for the higher, the higher levels. Kind of complicated combination.
What were you talking about? I go to the fitness center. I think he was threatening me about going to the fitness center.
So, so, you want to do it in the odd Thursdays? Even Thursdays?
I mean, that's how we have.
That's not how I do it.
That works for me.
Do they have court next Thursday?
Yes. 16th is court.
So, can we meet at Firehouse then?
Sure.
That'd be cool.
Yeah.
We did that on a Saturday one time.
So, we're talking about the night, which is our first day of school.
That was a long day.
Kenny's not here tonight or won't be here tonight.
Oh, God.
If not the Firehouse, I'll find him.
I don't know.
He'd be in the basement of MRV batting for something.
They got a beautiful evening. Do we have to add on Thursday? Because I got a meeting then.
Thursdays are the only night I'm available.
Yeah, but I got quite some people.
Right.
Or commentably depressing social...
So, he can only make Thursdays and you can't make Thursdays.
Whatever. Who are you going to have? I'd like to be here for the Welcome Center, that's the main thing. But I think all the rest of them ain't going to be that...
Oh, you're only, you're only not available for this Thursday?
Next Thursday.
The 16th.
I mean, just not every Thursday, just...
Yeah, just that day.
The first day of school.
Well, the 23rd, the 23rd, do you want to meet before the, before the board meeting, then like at 5?
Why don't we go through the ones that, that the administrative budget, the court budget, the, you know, we don't even invite the judge because it's what it is.
Yeah.
So we'll do that on that Thursday. We'll do all the kind of ministerial budgets that where there's not a lot of money.
Is it 20, is it 28, 9?
What time would you, what time would you, could you be available?
Next Thursday is the 16th?
6:00 to 3:00.
Yes, next Thursday is...
Joe, that'd be in court.
You'd be okay after this afternoon? In the evening?
I got a meeting at 5:15.
Sorry, boss. Alright.
And planning and zoning will not conflict, I'm sure, before you even ask.
What time?
What time, what hour? I don't know.
What day are we talking about?
16th, Thursday is 16th.
Thursday is 16th.
It's up to you, I don't care.
I'll be there late. What time do you want to do it?
She said 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
I might be able to make it.
On the 16th?
Yes.
We'll start right after.
And then on the 23rd, it'll be at five o'clock, because that'll be before our meeting.
Thank you, Pam, for making sure you look at me and remind me.
And this is, um, at the firehouse?
Firehouse on the sixteenth.
She's so good. She's like, ooh.
Do you have any conflict with that, do you know?
I just have some questions that can...
We'll see how far we get on those two days, and then we'll plan the 30th accordingly.
The 23rd, you said?
At six, six o'clock on the sixteenth.
And on the 23rd at five as well?
Six o'clock on the sixteenth.
I mean, if we do five o'clock, I give it a minute.
I'm asking a question.
Some, you know...
I want to know what everybody feels about.
Fire department budget doesn't take long. He's not, he's not requesting any new equipment. He's not requesting everything.
On the 23rd, are they talking about five o'clock?
Yeah, the hour before the...
But remember, the thing I recommend, though, and I forgot, if you're looking at '09, though, you have to remember that was volunteer.
What's that?
You're looking at apples and oranges.
But not only salary is done, but everything else.
But I'm with you. And I want to get to the same place you want to get to, right? I want beautiful roads and everything else. But make sure you're looking at apples to apples.
Who here did they do that?
Not volunteer workforce and paperwork.
You definitely dragged him about. This is not just Welkens.
And I feel, and I understand. I'm with you. I'm totally with you. Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought you were the first stop on the bus ride.
Alright, somebody needs to help me understand a couple of questions. I'm sure that y'all know the answers.
Martin, can we, can we get back? Gary's got some questions.
And they're probably really just, I just need to know for my own clarification, what's going on here?
What page, John?
I'm on page 11. I'm just curious, what is a chamber payment?
It's our membership to the Chamber of Commerce, and we, our website is maintained by a consultant who is hired kind of through the Chamber.
Okay, so our membership and the website is about ten...
Membership is $500.
And the rest is website, about 10 grand, okay.
And that's the city's website?
It's the city's website.
Okay, because I just didn't understand. Thank you.
No.
No. Not the, the, the Visit St. Gin website.
The Visit St. Gin website.
Tourism website.
So, who does, oh...
So, so that, that's, that is not coming out of the tourism budget?
No.
So, that's another 10 grand. Okay.
Okay. Sorry to give you the open back, Ken, but how many police officers do we have?
Eleven.
How many, how many dedicated investigators do we have?
One.
One.
Where are we at? What page?
That was page 12.
He's all over the place.
How many vehicles do we have?
Wait a minute, what page are we on?
Eleven, or 12?
12.
These are kind of questions I'm curious about. I just want to get my...
Just the police department?
Right, just the police department, because I'm looking at page 12. I'd like to know that, I'd like to...
He's gonna answer you.
Excellent. Who's gonna answer me?
Gary, Eric.
We have 11 officers, 11 cars, and I don't remember the other.
Do we have a dedicated investigator or detective?
We have one dedicated.
Is that full-time or part-time?
Full-time.
How many vehicles do we have for our police?
Eleven.
What's the average age?
Of a policeman or a vehicle?
Oh. Vehicle or person? Age of the vehicle?
Age of the vehicle, my friend.
The goal is five years, trying to keep them under five years.
Okay.
We have one now that's 2010, 2011, something like that, that will be going out if, if this budget is funded.
Beauty. That makes sense to me now. Everything adds up perfectly. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought you meant an officer. I'm like, I don't understand the relevance.
I knew there was a bunch of old, I was gonna try and jeopardize myself, but they don't want the old fart.
Um, may I ask a quick question? And I'm looking for revenue streams, so I'm, I'm like hoping five years from now. Um, I'm just looking at page 18. And the reason I was reading through this, because I was looking at revenues, and I'm hoping, God, we need roads and we need all this stuff. How can we bring more money into the community? Do we have anyone that is dedicated to writing grants, especially since National Parks is on the horizon, and there's a lot of money that can be made through National Park grants, is my understanding? Do we have anybody that is trained or that does our grant writing?
I write grants.
You do write grants. Okay, fantastic, because that could be a good revenue stream.
They're always conscious of, of looking for grants for things like parks.
Beautiful.
And, you know, there, there are no grants for roads.
Right, I didn't think so.
Well, I take that back. You know, this is not the time for this discussion.
Okay, alright, alright.
There are no grants for roads unless you're in a major metropolitan area.
Okay, you're my, you're our, you are our main grant writing guru. Thank you. Parks Department, real quickly, question for you, Gary, page 23. Are we still using that mosquito chemical that we're spending five grand a year on? I, I thought that that was outlawed.
Uh, we use, uh, this.
To treat the pond.
Okay, so they, they're, okay, good, thank you. So, there's still five grand?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you, sir.
I have a question. What is the band fund CD for?
Good question.
We hope you can answer it.
You had me at revenue stream, though. I looked at yours, too.
Originally, that was to try to save money for shelter, wasn't it?
Was it?
I believe so.
It's been there as long as I've been here.
See the revenue you're bringing in?
It was.
John, we're answering your question, and you're not answering.
I'm listening.
What did I say?
Build a shelter.
And they will come.
I mean, that was originally set aside for that, if I remember correctly. But I realized it wasn't going to grow along with the pace of construction costs going up, I guess, but it never...
That's the first time I've heard of that. I just knew we had a CD in, like, John?
It's from, it's from the band tax. It's money that was collected.
Can only be spent for band.
Can only be spent for live...
I thought maybe there was a band emergency that we're saving for.
Live public music performances.
I think that's kind of where the grant, grant application process was created, was to use some of that money back into the community for those time.
Yeah, I don't think it's been...
Well, that's interesting.
I don't think it's been sitting there for...
Yeah.
Not the CD.
Seven years.
Just some of the revenue that's generated.
Yeah, and they're doing that. They're doing that. I just wonder, we've got, it seems like we've got 50 grand sitting there for no purpose.
Page 26.
A really classy band stand would be really cool.
Where you put it?
I don't know.
Four minutes.
Okay, one more quick question for you. This is just my own edification. What is the special road fund budget item? What is, what is a special road fund?
The 75,000?
Yes, sir.
That's the money the special road district gave to us one year. And we've been just saving it.
Okay.
It will be used on Chedwell Lane when we get...
There's another road improvement.
I know, it's, check, check, that's all I wanted to know.
Hopefully, I'm hearing that's not for two. Is it gonna happen this year? You told me it's gonna happen this year.
It is not happening.
Who ever did that? It's very clean.
You said it is?
Did you do this? I said it will happen this year. We'll hear more about that in three minutes.
Three, Joe, three minutes.
Washing?
You got three minutes, Randy.
I need some water.
What do I need to do?
I don't know. We just got three minutes to do it.
So, let's, let's, uh...
Gary?
Let's hire Aerosmith or something.
Give them access to the water. Just let your take it.
All this meeting ordered, a Stanford pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gary gets back the roll call. We'll have a roll call.
Mayor Hassler?
Here.
Alderman Ruzika?
Here.
Alderman Prince?
Here.
Alderman Stupi?
Here.
Alderman Jones?
Here.
Alderman Jokers?
Here.
Alderman Donovan?
Here.
Alderman Mooney?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Soon to be here.
Almost here.
I was trying. Mayor, we have a form. I'm sorry.
Alright, well, we can go ahead and have approval of the agenda.
Most of you approve.
Second.
All on page?
Aye.
Yeah, good? Takes it. There's a meeting going on in the hallway out here.
Sorry.
Where started? Will you send Gary in?
I, I just sent Gary in there, so.
Oh, okay, well, we'll go on without him. So, uh, we'll take this to the city administrators' report.
Okay, we had a, a meeting here in City Hall where, uh, I and the mayor and Sandra Cabinet met with the representative of the National Park Service to review the process. You've received some of the benefit of that information tonight already in the work session, but, uh, it, um... I, um, think that, it's a personal comment, is, you know, we started out with this idea that we had this, like, this national park, and it'd be there on St. Mary's Street, and there'd be a couple of buildings involved, and now it's kind of taken on a whole new life. And I think some of that has to do with the visit from the senators and the regional director, and, and I, I'm, I'm just amazed that it's kind of progressed beyond my expectations, and I'm not displeased about any of that. But, uh, we, we had a, a good meeting. Didn't just meet with us, he was meeting with people all over the town about it, and, uh, and he's, he's, he's got a really good feeling about the, the progress of this, this process. I reported to you that Phoenix Contracting got the bid, uh, on the water tower. It, we had a meeting here with, uh, Phoenix Contracting, the, uh, County Commission, Brad Arnold from the Community Center, Alliance Water, and Brock Miller Construction, and, uh, everybody's agreeing on the schedule, and everybody's agreeing on who's gonna do what, and that process is just, uh, going, going pretty well. Commissioner Nelson, that he said, you know, for the first time, I'm, I'm feeling good about this, that it's gonna, it's gonna happen the way we, we expect it to. Since I wrote this, uh, report, uh, there was a meeting, uh, out on site with, uh, the, uh, Baumann Excavating is gonna be doing the foundation, and there were some kind of issues that he raised, so we made a executive decision to shift the tower 10 feet to avoid the conflicts that he saw, which doesn't affect anything in terms of the hydrology or the geometry. And, uh, we clarified where were the, the road would, would go, come in. There was some thought that the access road might encroach on the nursing center property. Uh, so, Commissioner Nelson called the owner of the nursing center and, uh, nursing home, and he's totally agreeable to whatever we need to do, so there's no conflict, and, and we'll, we'll get it done. Uh, we met with Lake-Nun on our insurance. We were remembering, we were talking insurance earlier. If we don't do anything, uh, our insurance is gonna go up 6%, uh, and we're gonna have to reduce benefits to get it at 6%. They don't offer, it was, it was explained to us that United Healthcare doesn't offer the same policy. They, every year, they change policies. So, what we have now isn't available. Uh, so, the policy that's most like what we have now would be a 6% increase. She also informed us of a program, uh, and I, I can't go into too much detail about it, because we're still waiting to hear about it, but it, it basically calls for the city to self-insure at some level. And, and so, if there's a claim and the insurance company that writes this program can't fill it, then there's a secondary insurance that, that will fill it, and, and so about, six things have to go wrong before the city would ever be looked to for a, um, to pay a claim. But this self-insurance program is, is something that a lot of communities have been going to, and, and, and you justify it by looking at your history and, uh, seeing what kind of claims you have, and, and making sure that, that you can cover that. Uh, in this case, we would be like the, the third responsible party in the event that the worst happens, and a major insurance company went bankrupt, and the secondary insurer went bankrupt, and, and it will hopefully end up reducing it. But as soon as I get the details, or when I get the details, I'll be bringing them to you, so you can kind of decide, because that, 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 that's kind of a policy decision. It's not, I don't want that to be an administrative decision, because we'd be committing the city to something that we in the past have not been committed to. The, um, I've included in your, in your, uh, handouts, did I include the, uh, proposed schedule? Maybe you didn't? I didn't. No, I didn't give it to you.
You did not.
There is a proposed schedule for the, uh, hearing, the, uh, on the, um, revisions to the TIF. Uh, the, the taxing districts have been notified. I think the first meeting is September the 6th. I'll look that up before you leave.
I know, it is the 6th.
Okay, it's September the 6th. Uh, then it will be held, it'll be held here, uh, to discuss the boundaries and whether or not we want to adjust them.
At 6:00 PM.
Uh, 6:00 PM? Um, that's a, I had a call from SEMA. We got Dave Bergen down there, is, is with the State Emergency Management Agency, saying, "You never closed out disaster number, whatever, and whatever." I said, "Sure, we did. I mean, we did that back, a year ago, two, a year and a half ago." Well, you never called SEMA. And I said, "Well, how are we supposed to know who we're supposed to call?" Uh, so anyway, he came in, and, uh, and Sue met with him and got all that resolved. It was not a, not a problem. It's just one of those bureaucratic things that amazement.
Thank you.
Dave Boba, uh, was made aware that we were looking for, uh, computers, and, uh, informed us that the school had just replaced their computers, and so they're two years old, and that they would be available for us to acquire. He brought in a sample of the, of the, of the computer, and it's a...
It's a, it's not computers.
Well, it's, it's like a Chromebook with a, with a keypad. And, uh, and they look, what do I know? They look fine to me. And, uh, and so, we're gonna acquire those for your use, and, uh, and should have those, uh, I don't know exactly when. Do you know when?
So, we'll be going to paperless packets.
Do you want to eliminate all this paperwork?
Yes, sir.
Then, uh, as you know, we're doing Park Roads, and the mayor and I took the opportunity to meet with, uh, Tom Keim at the hospital to make sure that they have new construction planned, and they've awarded the contract to an architect to design it. They have a preliminary layout. We were concerned that we're gonna go do this nice road, and they're gonna now start bringing in concrete trucks. And, uh, so...
I was hoping they'd do a section of that road, but they, they're not.
But, but they have agreed to avoid using the new overlay and stay, I mean, Pine Street is built to withstand major traffic. Park is not, and a, and a two-inch overlay isn't gonna make it any more able to handle concrete trucks.
Handle cement trucks.
Uh, so, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna route them through their, in Pine Street, through their property, and, and they're gonna protect, uh, Park Drive from any, any damage. And other than that, there's nothing noteworthy, uh, and, except that Alderman Jokers can report on the, uh, community television meeting that we all attended, when the time comes. You, it'll have committee reports, and you can do it, if you want to, if there's anything worth noting, yeah.
Okay, Martin, any questions for Martin? Okay, that takes us to, Kenny's not here, uh, for his report. Should have it, and then, uh, Gary Roth is here, though. Gary's back from vacation, well-rested. Oh, boy. Well, Gary, you're looking good.
After vacation, did you grade? Yeah.
You guys got my report in front of me.
You guys got my report in front of me. I don't have a copy of it. Got any questions or comments? We did start installation of the wayfinding signs. It's gonna be in four phases. Uh, phase one is complete. Phase two, the poles are in. They just need the signs, and they'll be on tomorrow. So within the next couple of weeks, we should complete that project.
You're gonna have to talk to an arborist about cutting that tree down there in front of the brick, or who are you there?
We're gonna be an arborist. We got most of the lines painted for schools starting. We got a couple crosswalks to paint yet.
You're all left to staff? You're all left to full staff?
Yep, full staff.
I wanna make a comment about that. You can interpret this however you choose. The week that Gary was, was gone, his folks did their work, got, got things done, and didn't, nobody missed a beat.
So we don't hate Gary.
That is, that is... That either, that either means... His leadership ability was such, it went very well in his absence.
Well, like I said before, we've got some very good employees. And you can tell that by this town. This town is, it looks nice, all over.
Gary, Ellie, Ellie Bond was asking me about some Johnson grabs, cutting.
That shit, that was all cut last week.
Okay. Is that, that, that creek bed behind the Knights of Columbus? Is, who's in, is that?
That, none, none of the creek beds are ours.
Who's in charge of that?
Uh, probably the KC.
Well, except for the, the, the one behind Point Base Apartments.
Well, that's a drainage ditch. That's, that's not a creek.
Oh, the creek, okay.
Is that, that, that big one, you know, the creek that goes there behind KC Hall? It's all really tall.
Yeah, those, that's all property owners.
If that was in my backyard, I think I'd probably get a letter complaining about it. Wouldn't I?
You know, that's, that's kind of a problem. There are natural areas that people don't maintain, and we don't, kind of, because there, no residence is right there, and, you know, it's, it's, it's more of a natural area.
Ellie's right.
It's always a problem deciding kind of where vegetation becomes a problem and where it's not a problem.
Right.
Uh, and, and that might be one of the areas where you want us to start doing that. I mean, that's, that's fine. Uh, I know, you know, we have a problem with the railroad on, uh,
Everything.
Right-of-way on South Gavory.
Yeah.
You know, it's right up, right up, right, right up close to the homes, but they won't
maintain it, and, you know, we have...
I'm not arguing. She just wanted me to ask about, and this is the first chance, that's all.
Where does she live at?
Right there behind the...
Back off of Seven.
On the other side of the creek.
Across the bridge, that little bridge down Seventh Street?
Yeah.
Anything else?
First of all, I just want to say, great job. Welcome back, and it does show great leadership when you're, you can leave.
Yep.
And you, and everything runs smoothly. Um, twenty-seventh, we have a park board meeting. I'm looking forward to that. Um, we're gonna re, I'd like to review a line up for budgeting for those trees we were talking about, because I have, whatever we fall short, what we're looking to do is nineteen trees, uh, for the city, and we have a little bit of budget left for that, we think, and whatever we don't have budgeted...
You better spend it in a hurry.
A local individual has said that they will pay for the rest of the cost.
Well, I, it's about a hundred dollars a tree?
It's about a hundred and ten dollars a tree.
Yeah, I think there was, what'd I say, like, twenty, three hundred dollars there?
That's exactly what you said. Yeah.
And landscaping.
So we're looking to get that, and then it'll be, whatever's left over, this particular person will eat the rest of it for us. Uh, nineteen trees. Then we'll plant those in the fall around Ward One.
But...
Oh, the low-hanging limb on the street? You got a plan for that?
Next week. Once we get past tomorrow. Yeah, once we get past tomorrow.
Yeah. And you got Monday probably, you gotta...
Then that's not too bad.
Not too bad Monday?
Except we can't send a street sweeper down Main Street before eight o'clock.
Right.
One time they were out, like, about a o'clock. We got calls.
When I was a younger person, they used to do the street sweeping at night.
But that was with horses.
No.
Oh, brooms. With horse hair broom, that's what it was. Love you, Buck. Just kidding.
Thank you, Gary.
That it?
That it?
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Brings us to committee reports, and I know there's nothing from planning and going. I was already told. What about the TV?
You, you guys think more? I don't remember being any, anything out of your own.
They're, they're just a little longer than, maybe they need to be. Well, except they need a member. Maybe, maybe.
A new board member?
I think we're all right.
Okay.
Right, right now.
Okay. I take it there's no more, no public comments. Uh, you have time to look at your consent agenda?
Yes to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carried. There is no old business. Takes us to new business.
Right, before we start...
Before we start.
Down, down all of this, all of these, these budget amendments.
Wait a minute, we gotta get through bill number, the overlay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Bill Number forty-two twenty-nine, ordinance approving change order number one to the contract with Jokers Incorporated to allow an overlay on Mary Ellen Street and Park Drive in the amount not to exceed sixty-three, sixty-three per ton.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We don't have to have a second reading on that, or we?
Oh, we should, because we gotta get going.
Motion for a second reading, our reading?
Second.
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay. The second reading of Bill Number forty-two twenty-nine, an ordinance approving a change order number one to the contract with Jokers Incorporated to allow an overlay of Mary Ellen Street and Park Drive in the amount not to exceed sixty-three, sixty-three per ton.
Motion to approve. Second.
We'll have a roll call vote?
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers? Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number forty-two twenty-nine, now the ordinance forty-one sixty-one.
Very good. Now, Martin, you have some...
Okay. These budget amendments, you know, we had this discussion before. A budget is a plan. We go about our business and, and, and we take great pains to make sure that we don't spend more money than was authorized for any department. However, you don't always know how much is gonna be here and how much is gonna be there, but at the end of the year, we have to reconcile the expenditures, adjust the budget to reflect the expenditures, so the auditor won't come in and say, "Hey, wait a minute." So these are, these are budget amendments that are just changing the lines around in order to make them match real time with the expenditures and, and, and make it compatible with the, uh...
Do we do it individually?
Yeah, individually.
Okay.
You wanna read them all?
I have read them all.
Read them all?
Oh, no, no, I wouldn't take your job from you, boss, no.
All right, we'll go on Bill Number forty-two thirty, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2018 Budget relating to the Capital Improvement Fund Number seventy.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill Number forty-two thirty-one, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2018 Budget relating to Federal Levy Fund Number forty-five and Capital Improvement Fund Number seventy.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill Number forty-two thirty-two, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2018 Budget relating to the General Fund Budget Number Ten, Department Number Sixteen, Police.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill Number forty-two thirty-three, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2018 Budget relating to the Rural Fire Fund Budget Number Sixty.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill Number forty-two thirty-four, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2018 Budget relating to the Transportation Budget Number Twenty-One and Debt Service Fund Number Fifty.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill Number forty-two thirty-five, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2018 Budget relating to the Value, Valley Springs TIF Fund Budget Number Forty and the General Fund Number Ten.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill Number forty-two thirty-six, an ordinance to the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, amending Chapter seven oh six water, Section seven oh five point three. Pardon me?
Go ahead. I want, I want to describe this one to you.
Fire hydrants, subsection D, the municipal code as set forth below.
Okay, so our ordinance says that fire hydrants, that people can't plant anything that would obstruct access, the view of, or the operation of the fire hydrant, but it's not specific. And in one case, we had someone build a fence that didn't obstruct the view, didn't deny accessibility, but when you put our eighteen-inch trench on top of it, the fence was too close to make it around. So, uh, the chief asked me to come up with an ordinance that would specify a clearance area so that they can operate the fire hydrants even.
They addressed that. Did you look at it?
He fixed it. He did, voluntarily.
That's fine, what he did?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as, as long as they can make the turn, you know.
Okay.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill Number forty-two thirty-seven, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Hoffcom, Wapapella, Missouri, for the per, purchase of, uh, Amplus EF twenty-five STD electronic power unit in the amount not to exceed six thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we have no other business? Any communication?
We didn't need any second reading, what else, just to make...
No, oh, that would be great.
No. Alrighty. So I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Have a roll call?
To discuss real estate.
So moved.
So moved.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika?
Yes.
Motion carries to six twenty-one.